All right, okay, all right, I think I've, I think I solved the problem in my end. Okay, let's do this again. We, we started a meeting at seven thirty at the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. We've identified our members and we would then go for the approval of our minutes. And keep in mind, we're approving two minutes. We had, on the same day, we had a public hearing to approve a amendment to the P O C D. And we had a special meeting that was moved to the same day from our regular meeting of our normal Planning Commission meeting. That was on November the eighteenth. Did anyone read, did everyone read the minutes of those two meetings?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Motion to approve the minutes for November eighteenth.
All right, we'll hear a second.
I wasn't present, Peter.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll give, I'll give you a second.
Okay.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You abstaining, Bob?
Bob's abstaining.
Yes.
Did every, did everyone, did everyone hear that, that conversation? My, my dog heard, my dog, my dog heard it too. God, that's terrible. Give me one second.
There you go.
You have, yep, you have a new chair.
What's better?
Okay.
They're gonna turn you into the animal control officer kicking that thing.
No. Okay, I'm sorry for the confusion. Okay, so we'll go, we'll go right on to the, the next, the new business, which would be Ramley Hill Road, Ramley Hill Road, I'm sorry.
Did we do the special meeting? Did we do the special meeting minutes?
Well, actually, no, we did not. I thought, I thought we did both of them, both of them, but let's, so we, we approved the November eighteen meeting for the P O C D. And now we're approving the special meeting, November eighteenth, a regular planning meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve that minutes, those minutes as well?
Motion to approve the, the minutes for the special meeting on November eighteenth.
Do I hear a second?
Again, I was not there.
Okay, then I'll, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, am I correct in assuming that we now can go on to the first matter of the, of the new business? And I, I, again, I'll apologize to everyone for having these technical difficulties. That was totally unexpected. Okay, so now, what do we have now for the, for the next matter on the agenda is a lot line revision. And it is a lot line revision on Rainy Meadows. It involves Lot number four and Lot number five. And what is being done simply is, we're, in essence, removing the lot line to take away from Lot number six and replacing that area with a lot line revision on, on Lot number, on Lot number six. So we're, we're, we're adding, we're taking Lot number six and we're adding to Lot number five. If you can see the, you can see the map right now. Keep in mind that Lot number six, Lot number six has a provision, has a conservative easement. It is affected by a conservation, conservation easement affecting Lot number five recorded in volume one ten, twelve forty-four on the, on the Roxbury Land Records. It simply means that that property is affected by the four ninety public statute that gives a special tax treatment and you can't really build on it unless you convert it back to the normal kind of a zoning requirement. It's, it's not a very complicated issue. It's just a matter of swapping some property and both lots really don't affect anything of, of the surrounding neighbors. It's, it's a very simple amendment and lot line revision that is here before me. Does anyone understand this that we're doing?
Excuse me, I just want to make sure everybody understands this is between Lot five and Lot four, not Lot, Lot number six is not involved?
Oh, I'm sorry. I looked at the acreage. That is correct. Apologize, let me amend that. It's Lot number four, Lot number five. Lot number five is six point zero five four two acres and Lot number four is five point four eight seven eight acres. The, the Lot number six will now, it reads inclusive of parcel four X, which is the portion that, that was formerly, had, has formerly had a lot line, has now been revised to give that portion to Lot number five. And again, let me amend what I said earlier and I apologize for the confusion. The Lot number five is affected by the conservation easement. Okay? But it has really no bearing on how we, as to whether or not we're going to approve this particular lot line amendment. Did anyone, anyone see the amendment on the, on the screen?
Yeah.
Are there any questions to that particular lot line revision?
What, and what's the purpose of it?
The purpose is to add some property to Lot number four for Peter to, you, you intend to build a house on that, Peter, is that correct?
I, I, I build a will, yes. I'm not gonna do it myself. It's to move the buildable area to the east.
Right. And of course, Lot number, keep in mind, Lot number four is not affected by the conservation easement. So it has no bearing on anything at all in terms of the original designation of Lot number five. And it simply adds property to, to the east onto Lot number four, which is almost equal to what was taken out of Lot number five, essentially as being, being exchanged, so to speak. But again, it has no bearing on the lot line revision. We're just revising the lot lines and it redoes nothing to the designation of Lot number five. It simply adds property to, to Lot number four for future potential construction of a residence, which would be allowable under the current regulations.
I don't see any issues.
I don't either.
Okay. Anyone, can I hear a motion to approve the lot line revision on Rainy Meadows for Peter Maggot as presented in the map before you?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered, okay, Peter, we all set?
Very good, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Again, I apologize for the confusion. That's, that's not the way I normally like to run a meeting, but.
Well, I liked, I liked the touch of having the dog there.
Yeah, well, you know, he has, he has decided he's going to lay right next to my chair now and be perfectly comfortable and happy, right next to my feet.
Very good. Thanks again.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, that'll take us to the next item on new business. The zoning, it's a zoning referral, the tax amendment on accessory apartments. And let me just cut to the chase on this. It's essentially improving the ability to have two accessory apartments, one within the residence and one freestanding. What was done is that the, we've improved the, the size of the accessory apartment as, as it, as it applies to a freestanding apartment from the original fifty percent of the residence to a maximum of eighteen hundred square feet, a minimum of four hundred square feet. And as long, within the, the building, within the residence. It is a minimum of four hundred fifty square feet and a maximum of forty percent of that particular residence. So have, has anyone had a chance to read the amendments?
I, my copy says proposed text amendments are shown in red, but then there's nothing in red.
Oh, well, it probably was copied, you must have gotten a copy of it. So let me just, let me just read to you what the amendments were, okay?
Peter, Peter, this is Paul Lean, I'm sorry, I might.
That's okay.
It cost you fifty dollars.
Well, we'll cut your pay, we'll cut your pay in half, Paul Lean, that's all.
All right.
So now, now you get half zero. Okay, let's see what happens here. Let's go again to the, to the zoning amendment. And of course, you know, the intent of the regulation is what it says in the beginning, to encourage creation of accessory apartments within or adjunct to existing single family residences. That's kind of boilerplate and it's what, that's what existed before. What changed was on the conversion, and I read what's in red. One primary residence and two accessory apartments, or one accessory apartment and one second standalone home will be allowed per lot. So that's, that's a change, okay?
Excuse me, Peter, it's John Coe, can I just jump in for one second?
Good job.
When this was drafted, this was drafted by Kim Tester and myself. If you don't know Kim Tester, she's a teacher at Canterbury School. So when we went, yeah, so here comes some of the red. So we went through section fourteen for the accessory apartments, she corrected a lot of the language in there. A lot of the red, scratch off and all that stuff is just grammar and a teacher being a teacher.
Yeah, no, I got it.
Okay, I just.
No, so what's happening right now is that I am actually correcting a teacher. That's very impressive.
That is, well, say, you will be graded on this.
I hope I'm being graded on a curve. Well, let's see what happens here. Let's, let me continue with the, what I said earlier, there's, there's one, you could have one accessory apartment within your residence and a second freestanding as a separate building, okay? I'm, there's no point in me reading any of that crossed out red stuff that's there, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's correct, Peter, it's just grammatically corrected.
Yeah, well, that has, that has really not, that nothing, there's no bearing on what we're doing here, from what I can see.
The nutshell that we changed was remove the primary owner from having to reside on the premises. Basically, the reason why we did that is because it's almost enforceable. With Airbnb, people renting things out, it happens all over the place here, so we removed that.
So, so essentially, there could be three tenants on the property. A tenant, a tenant, a tenant would rent the original residence, a tenant would be in the, in the separate unit within that residence, and a tenant that would be in the separate building, that's accessory apartment, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that, and that, that's nothing, you can't, you can't, you can't enforce it by telling them you can't rent out your own, your own home, so, you know.
How do you?
No, you can't, no, you can't, you cannot, I agree with that. Yeah, you cannot.
The other thing we removed was the guest houses. It's redundant. The only difference would be the lack of a kitchen in a guest house. So we just removed that from the reg, so now everything would be an accessory apartment. You want a kitchen, put one in, you don't, don't, who cares, same thing.
Well, and again, what happened is also that the original, the original accessory apartment regulation called for if you have a accessory apartment, a freestanding, a different building, it cannot be larger than fifty percent of the square footage of the residence. What has happened is that was changed where the maximum square footage of the accessory apartment building can be eighteen hundred square feet or a minimum of four hundred fifty square feet. There's no more relationship to the percentage of the square footage on the residence. So you can build an accessory apartment freestanding at eighteen hundred square feet, that's, that's allowable. We're here to for, if you had a three thousand square foot house, for example, you could only build a accessory apartment freestanding at fifteen hundred square feet. So there's, there's improvement there. And the other improvement, the other improvement or change, and you correct me, John, if I, if I go off.
No, you're just.
Off track here. Then the other improvement is that the accessory apartment that's allowable within the residence, again, it can be a minimum, a minimum of four hundred fifty square feet or a maximum of forty percent of the square footage of the residence, is that correct?
That did not change.
That did not change, okay. So again, that's the only change really happened is there's more leverage and there's more opportunity to have accessory apartments and to have the sizes that have improved in terms of creating accessory apartments. It's going to help, you know, and again, the, the whole, the whole idea of accessory apartments has certainly been improved and that was always the intent of this particular regulation.
Sounds good, it's correct.
So, do I hear anyone commenting on that? Any comments or can I get a motion on, on approving it?
Are there any boundaries or setbacks between buildings?
Everything is status quo as far as the rest of the regulations, it would still fall in line. There is no separation between buildings, that has never existed and still doesn't. Might be something we might want to address, it kind of seems logical.
Well, it almost, it almost seemed, I mean, you know, you, you obviously would have to, if you have a separate standing building, and I can speak that because I happen to have, I have to be in a position like that, you certainly have to have your own septic system for that building.
Correct.
You would have to have potentially a well for that building. So the area between the built, the houses would have to be sufficient in order to, to handle the setback requirements of the septic system from the house, the circumference of one hundred fifty feet of the relocation to the septic system, and all those areas would obviously force you to be away from the main residence for a certain amount, for a certain distance.
That falls under the health standards and that, unless they're using, again, it's not our area, common septic, if it's connected by a roof, sometimes they do that so they are close together, it's considered the same, or they can utilize the same septic system and well, but that's not our call, that's Newtown Health.
Well, that, that again would be a health, a health issue.
Yeah, correct.
If they're separate buildings, then they have separate water and septic.
If they're not, well, that's not our call, but Newtown Health does permit, usually, if it's connected by a roof, they can utilize the same thing. Otherwise, otherwise they can get a modification through the state or something, but I'm speaking out of turn with all the Newtown Health.
Okay, but they could literally be. They could literally be two feet apart.
They would connect it with a roof, we've had those come through.
But I mean, even, even if you didn't connect it with a roof. If somebody wanted to build it.
Then you'd be doing two complete septic systems and stuff, so it's, it's, you know, financially foolish, go ahead.
Well, as, as steadily financially, we could say a value, et cetera, would, would not, would not work.
Yeah.
But I will tell you, Bob is, Bob is correct, I'm, I'm sorry, Bob, I didn't mean to step on you. But that is, I've, I've seen it, I've seen it where someone was trying to circumvent that by just having a walkway with a roof over it and it didn't fly. That, that's kind of a special kind of an exception, that kind of a special permit. And the state and the, the health departments of the state, they, they found those, those kind of things to just play around with it. So it's, it's very rare that anybody even would want to do that, it just, it doesn't seem to make sense.
The old Joe Bryan, the old Joe Bryan house up at Bingo, North Quarter of Gold Mine and Painter Ridge and Painter Hill, you know, they, they've just got roofs connecting between the buildings and then the old Olivieri House on Route sixty-seven has, you know, like, I don't know, a hundred feet of covered roof between the houses and the, their accessory apartment. And I mean, of course, that was, that was built, you know, fifteen years ago anyways, but, you know, the lengths that people will go to or, you know, what it will look like, you know, as they try to put it together.
Well, there's another, there's another provision in this, in this, in this text for accessory apartments and that if they make any changes afterwards, there's, there's that, John, you can probably comment on that. And that's been in the, in the statute always, that you can, we can, the, the commissions, zoning and health can, they can ask for a inspection of the, of the premises even after they are occupied. And if there are any amendments that are made without permits, that can, the permission can be revoked and you can put a cease and desist on the property, I guess. John, am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, that's correct, that's always been in there, that's the same thing. Hypothetical, someone sticks six apartments in a building, we would have the right to revoke a permit if we found that out. Nothing's changed with that language pretty much, it's the same thing.
Yeah. So in other words, if, if somebody would all of a sudden take the accessory building and, and make two apartments out of it?
Correct.
After you approve, that could, that could be a no-no, obviously.
That would be a no-no, but that's tough because we have to get the state involved and actually, that's Catherine De See does that. It's actually a criminal housing act, so we would have to get that in. It, it's a long thing, it's a safety net that has to be in there.
Well, unless anybody else has any concerns or questions, I would recommend that we reapprove this tax amendment and see it as being compatible with our plan of conservation development and respond in the affirmative to approve this tax amendment. That's my, that's my motion? Do, do you have a second to that, to that motion?
A second.
Any, any further comments or questions? If they're not, then I would like to hear, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, so ordered, all right. Well, now we're making progress and we almost sound normal now, that's, I'm really happy, that's great. That's, that's, okay.
I still think we could get together in the town hall and sit six feet apart.
Well, we could do that and I, and I'm gonna bring my dog though, is that okay?
That's fine. No lizards or carrots.
Okay, all right, well, then, that brings us down to the chairman's report. And I'd like to welcome Lorenzo Gudioso to the meeting. And Lorenzo has requested to be a, a member of the Planning Commission in an alternate position and he would actually fill the term of Chris Cody, who has moved into a permanent member position or to a regular member position. So Lorenzo, maybe you can just tell us a little bit about, about you and the reason that you would want to join and so we can hear what you have to say. We would appreciate that.
All right, well, thank you. Well, as some of you may know, I actually ran in the last election. I didn't know I was running, but it was, it was an interesting event. I have been in Roxbury for just about eight years now, love Roxbury, some of you might remember me from the, the, the conserva, planning and conservation meetings, standing up and looking for a way to get involved. When I talked to Barbara Henry about different, different ways to get involved in the town and keep the spirit of Roxbury the way it is, planning came up and again, I was very interested in it, trying to keep Rox, that, that specialness that Roxbury has. My background is as a financial planner. I currently have an office in Woodbury, I'm moving my office to Milldale, Connecticut. If you guys know where that is, right next to Southington. Been doing this for just over twenty-two years. Loved, I used to, I used to work in Manhattan and have a beautiful head of hair. The commute kind of killed that, but, but it's, my commute now is wonderful, best I could ever have. I don't know, what, what information would you like to know about me?
Lorenzo, did you say you, you, you don't reside in, in Roxbury?
No, I live in Roxbury, I live on Roxbury.
Oh, okay, okay.
I have an office in Woodbury currently.
And you have an office, you have another office?
In Milldale.
Oh, okay, all right, I thought, I thought you live in that office, that's what I thought you.
Depending on the week. I'm still here.
Okay, all right. Well, and has, is anyone, first of all, let me explain as to what the Zoom situation creates, has created, okay? Normally what happens is you come to one of our meetings, we have a discussion, the members will, you know, comment or, you know, ask you various questions. Then we go to a executive session where you would leave the room and we would discuss your, you know, qualifications and or possibility to be a member of the commission. And then after we've done that and everybody expressed their opinion, you would come back in and, you know, we would, we would then tell you that, you know, you're on board or somebody has some concerns, you know? But the issue is that since we're on Zoom, we're not going to do that. So what I'm asking is that if there's anyone that has any questions of Lorenzo, please express them right now. And if there are any negativity that, that you would like to bring to attention, which I can't see what they would be, but then what we would have to do is I would request that then we would close this meeting and you submit your concerns, negative concerns as to why not, to the commission. And then at the next meeting, we would then vote for approval or, or no approval, you know, which, again, I'm just telling you that, that would be the, I don't see any reason why that would be the case here where anyone that would be negative about, about you joining our commission. Am, am I correct in assuming that? Is there anyone here that would like to postpone the voting for Lorenzo until the next meeting?
I, I don't know what difference it'll make.
Yeah, it, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't. So again, are, are there, are there any members that, that would like to, well, can I put it to a commission? Can we vote on the fact that we are approving Lorenzo's, Lorenzo joining us as a alternate? And if that's unanimous, yes, then you're all set, Lorenzo. And, and I can't, if somebody wants to abstain of that, as long as we still have a quorum that would approve you, it still would be okay. So, and then I can explain to you what an alternate member really does and what, what the situation is. So can I ask for a vote to accept Lorenzo's, Lorenzo joining us as an alternate member to, for the term, for the remaining term of Christine, who has moved from an alternate to a regular member? So you would be actually in until that term expires and then you would have to go and get voted in again in the next, next election for, you know, for, for all the members. So.
I vote yes.
Okay, that, but, why don't we get an individual yes vote so, so it's clear that Bob, Bob, Bob?
Not some of the votes, yep.
Christine Cody?
Pauline, yes.
Chris Cody, yes.
Who do we have left? Me?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's, it's, it's a big yes. Okay, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're, we're good, Lorenzo. So how this works now is that you would have to be sworn in at, at the time clerk's office and you'll get a letter, you know, telling you how wonderful we feel that you're now a member of the commission and, and welcome aboard.
I do.
Any, any questions, Lorenzo?
I'm sure I'm gonna have plenty as we go along.
Yeah, well, okay. Okay, that's good. As long as I have any questions before we get sworn in. If you have any questions now about swearing in, let me know so we can handle them. Okay, all right. Okay, I think we're good. With that, and now that my dog is no longer howling and I can actually be heard and you can hear me, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, it was nice seeing everybody. Bob, I'm glad to see you back kicking, or maybe not quite kicking, but you're still, you're doing okay.
Yeah, I'm in a walking boot now and back to work, so.
Good.
I'm getting around.
I, I call that doing okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
You too.
Thank you very much for showing up and again, I apologize for the, the interruptions and the technical difficulties and I don't know why I couldn't get this thing going because I've got the latest. got the latest model of computer, I've got the latest model of everything on there, it must have been me. And I take the blame, I take the blame for everything. Okay, so listen, if I don't see anybody before, anybody before Christmas, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure seeing you all.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
There too, yeah. Let's be, let's have twenty-one being substantially better than twenty was. Good written, Mr. Twenty. Okay, well, good, good night, everybody. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.